Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Tuesday, September the 8th, 2020. As a preface to this evening's meeting, I would like to read a brief statement explaining the virtual circumstances surrounding this evening's meeting. Until further notice, meetings of the Skokie Village Board will be held electronically, with the majority of village officials participating via remote access in order to comply with the State of Illinois gubernatorial disaster proclamation. Members of the public who wish to comment as to an item on the published agenda or to comment during public comments must submit their statement or question in writing to the village manager's office. And all properly submitted statements or questions will be presented and read during the relevant portion of the meeting. Written comments may be submitted by email to citizencomments@skokie.org, by mail to the Village of Skokie Village Manager's Office, 5127 Oakton, Skokie, 60077, or via the village's Dropbox located just outside by the public entry to the village hall. With that, the meeting will come to order and the village clerk, Promod Shaw, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will come to order and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Roberts.
Here.
Trustee Sutker.
Here.
Trustee Ulrich.
Here.
Trustee Bromberg.
Here.
Trustee Klein.
Here.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Here.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Here, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. A motion is in order. Trustee Ulrich seconded by trustee Gray Keeler. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye, the motion passes. Next item is report of our village manager, John Lockery.
Thank you Mayor Van Dusen and good evening everyone. Item A is regarding the Music Theater Works Agreement for the North Shore Center for the Performing Arts. Music Theater Works is a professional not-for-profit music theater founded in 1980. During its 40-year history, Music Theater Works has presented more than 150 productions and intimate presentations. Music Theater Works is currently participating in the center's current Outback Outdoor Concert Series and will officially begin its tenancy at the center with a launch concert in June of 2021. This event will be followed by three large-scale musicals in the center theater in August, October, and December of 2021. In 2022, Music Theater Works will expand its use of the north theater with current plans for three productions in that space and two in the center theater. As a reminder, the North Shore Center for the Performing Arts is home to many tenants, including the Northlight Theater, Skokie Valley Symphony, and the Music of the Broke. The agreement between the Village of Skokie and Music Theater Works defines the terms initial five-year tenancy for lease of space at the North Shore Center for the Performing Arts in Skokie, beginning in June of 2021. Ann Tennis and Michael Pocken are both here this evening to answer any questions. I concur with staff's recommendation and respectfully request mayor and board approval authorizing the execution of this agreement.
A motion to concur with the village manager's recommendation and the Music Theater Works tentative lease is in order. Trustee Gray Keeler seconded by trustee Sutker. Are there any comments or questions? Trustee Roberts.
I just would like to ask about, I was looking at attachment one, the rent schedule, and I'm not familiar with some of the terminology there that's used about load-ins and waivers. Could you possibly walk me through, just explain how the rent is calculated and what it will be, please?
Michael Pocken, I'll turn that over to you, please.
Yeah, so the, a couple of different things there. Basically, the rent is calculated by the week. There is, some of that time is allocated towards load-in, usually a few days at the beginning of the rental period, so the first week of occupancy is usually load-in followed by a period of technical rehearsals involving the performers, and then after that, they can begin performances. For the shows in the bigger theater, it's usually a full week plus, so maybe depending on the show, it could be anywhere from seven to 10 days for them to be able to do, get to that first performance. That's pretty typical of like, for example, what Northlight does. In some instances, for example, the launch production that John referred to next June, that's a simple concert, so they'll be able to load in on the Monday or Tuesday and be able to be at performance by Thursday or Friday. It's just a simpler thing, it's not as much scenery and so forth. We have in the schedule, provided them sort of one extra loadout day that is usually the Monday following, so that they have a little bit more time to get out of the theater before we bring somebody else in. That was just sort of thrown in there, it's not a big deal for us to do that, we've done that kind of thing before on a, with the Monday following a weekend, you know, schedule of performances, so that if, that say they want to do two shows on a Sunday, there's time to get out of there before we bring somebody else in. I don't know if that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just didn't know what load-in meant.
Okay.
Basically, but then in terms of the rent itself, could you just briefly explain how, how is that calculated?
I would say that it was, sort of negotiated to some extent. We look at what we would normally charge per day, and essentially for a week, we'd get three, usually three to four days worth of rent per week is about, is sort of typical. The first year, we, Ann and I worked this out, we wanted to sort of incentivize them to sort of a first-year occupancy, so for example, the launch production in June is going to be rent-free, we want to get them established and off to a good start. We incentivized them with next December's show with a week of free rent for them to take a week later than they really wanted. That was to our advantage because, truth be told, the week that they're going to be starting the performance, this is the week that includes Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, which fall on a weekend in 2021, it's not a favorable schedule to what they want to do, and, but it was favorable to us as the center to keep a week earlier in December open for other uses. And eventually, a couple of years down the road, the calendar will be set and, and, and we'll be, you know, Christmas will be on a weekday again and all will be good. So I'm not sure if that answers your question or not, it was definitely a rent, the rent was basically a negotiated kind of number. There are other revenue streams that are outlined in the agreement, including separate charges for energy and, and cleaning and so forth that are in addition to rent.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Trustee Ulrich.
Hi, Michael.
Hi.
Thank you for what you do, we all appreciate it very much, you do a great job. A little off-topic, just to assuage patrons' worries about COVID, what, what is it they're doing to follow, you know, protocol and be as safe as possible?
Well, right now, of course, we're not doing anything inside, so we are doing only these outdoor concerts, which we worked with the health department on as far as distancing and, and what we needed to do. For example, we're letting people in the building to use the restrooms, if they need the restrooms, we have floor markings and we have, you know, sort of separating in and out into the, into the lobby, that sort of thing. We have, we've established some additional cleaning protocols, we bought some, bought a piece of equipment called, it's called a Clorox 360, and it's this electrostatic sprayer that you can go into a room, for example, a restroom, and it literally is a disinfectant that adheres to surfaces and you just spray it on everything, you shut the room off for an hour, and then it's, it's, it's done, and it's like a hospital-grade cleaning. That'll become even more important once we reopen inside, but right now, we're not forecasting that to happen before 2021, I'm not sure exactly what point in the, in the new year, obviously, hopefully sooner rather than later, but it certainly won't be before January, and my best guess is it's more likely going to be March.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye, the motion passes. Michael and John, Michael and Ann, excuse me, Ann, John, thank you, great job.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it, and thanks to Ann and Michael Lorge, a lot of work to get to where we are, so thank you both.
That was applause you heard, virtual applause, standing ovation, thank you.
Item B is regarding an intergovernmental agreement with Cook County to receive CARES Act funds. Cook County is providing $533,358 in CARES Act to assist in offsetting expenses incurred in addressing the spread of COVID-19. These funds were part of the 429 million CARES Act allocation the county received. The act permits the reimbursement of expenses incurred between March and December of 2020 directly related to containing, preventing, and mitigating coronavirus, both within the organization and the community at large. The village has already incurred considerable expenses in our efforts to stop the spread, including responding to emergency and non-emergency calls, purchasing personal protective equipment, outfitting offices to comply with distancing mandates, hardening our technology infrastructure to enable remote work, and so on. In order to apply for reimbursement of expenses and take advantage of the allocation for the county, an intergovernmental agreement is required. I respectfully request mayor and board approval of the resolution to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Cook County to receive CARES Act funds.
A motion on the intergovernmental agreement with Cook County in order to receive CARES Act funds is in order. Trustee Sutker seconded by trustee Roberts. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye, the motion passes.
Items C and D were approved as part of tonight's consent agenda, and that completes my report.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is report of our corporation counsel, Michael Lorge.
Thank you Mayor, trustees, good evening everyone. Item A is an ordinance which was on the consent agenda at the beginning of this evening's meeting and was adopted at that time. Item B is a resolution on the agenda for board action tonight. This resolution appoints Julian Prendy as the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Authorized Agent on behalf of Skokie and removes Krista Ballou, who recently retired as the Village of Skokie Personnel Director. Julian Prendy, Director of Finance and IT, shall serve in this additional capacity until a new Personnel Director is appointed, and that person will then take the IMRF position as well.
A motion is in order. Trustee Bromberg seconded by trustee Klein. Is there any, is there any critical comments of Julian Prendy, serving as our authorized IMRF representative? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye, the motion passes. Congratulations, Julian, you have one more job to do.
Item C is a resolution on the agenda for board action tonight as well. This resolution approves a plat of subdivision for the purpose of consolidating 11 lots into three lots. This is the site of the 8,000 North Residential Commercial Development currently under construction, and the subdivision is necessary to complete the sale of the properties to the developer at this time. This subdivision will separate the commercial and residential building that will be on Lot 1, the parking garage that is on Lot 2, and the common parking access area that will be on Lot 3. Mayor, I would ask for board action on this resolution.
A resolution on the approval of the plat of subdivision as recommended by village counsel is in order. Trustee Klein seconded by trustee Ulrich. Are there any comments or questions on the resolution? If not, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye, the resolution passes. I'm advised that John Murphy and Norm Hesseger, partners on the 8,000 project, are, have joined us by phone, is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
This is Norm Hesseger.
Great, welcome, Norm.
Thank you very much. I just want to let you know, Mayor Van Dusen, that John should be joining us, but I want to, I want to make a couple of comments. I think your leadership, the trust and the leadership of the board, staff, John Lockery and Michael Lorge have just done an incredible job of bringing this forward. It's been a very complicated process with a lot of different agencies, governmental agency approvals, even the FAA, we had to get approval of, which is kind of ironic in itself, but without the support of the village, leadership, and staff, this wouldn't have happened, so we want to thank you very much for that, and we look forward to getting the construction of the tower, and John probably wants to add some comments.
Yeah, this is John Murphy, and I echo what, what Norm said, I can't thank you for your, you know, continued and ongoing support, and we look forward to advancing the project very shortly.
Great, then I will proceed with item D, which is the ordinance that will formally approve and authorize the disposition of the Skokie-owned property for its sale and transfer of title for the new 8,000 North development. On February 20th, 2020, this board approved Village Resolution Number 18-2-R-1386, which authorized the development agreement with 8,000 North LLC, now known as MDG 8,000 North Lincoln Owner LLC. The development agreement, as revised, promotes commercial and residential growth and will generate new sales tax in the area. The development agreement authorized the sale and transfer of title of 8013 Floral Avenue and 8,000 Lincoln Avenue, previously known as 5114 to 5120 Oakton Street, Skokie, to the developer for the amount of $1,500,000. This resolution completes the disposition, I'm sorry, this ordinance completes the disposition of that property for the project. Mayor, this item will return on the September 21, 2020 agenda for second reading and adoption at that time, unless there are any questions.
Are there any questions? Trustee Roberts.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was muted. Michael, I, it's a 38-page agreement, and I think I've understood most of it as I've read through, but I, I would appreciate if you could just comment or, or take us just a little bit through what Skokie has expanded in terms of the parking garage, and then how that works under the development agreement when, at the end of the project, at some point, the garage portion will be sold to the developers, or could you just walk us through or help me understand that a little bit better, please?
Yeah, and we'll probably triple-team you here because John and Julian have some of those numbers in their head as well. The basic concept is that the village used a revenue bond structure in order to get the garage portion of the project underway with the developer, and there are strictures for the repayment of those monies in two ways. First, there is a lease agreement that is part of the development agreement that requires lease payments accelerating through a 10-year period to cover the, some of the carrying freight, so to speak, of those revenue bonds, and then the amount that is either still owed at any point where they sell the building along the way, or at the conclusion of the 10 years, then gets paid out at that closing. There is a requirement, as you allude to, that at any time they were to move to sell the building, being the residential tower, they are required and obligated to also sell the garage, so that it, it is one piece, it must be treated that way. There is a parameter for the purchaser to continue a lease for an extra two years, but we are, as a village, protected that if and when the project is sold, it must be sold as a, as a joint unit, so that the village is able to receive its, its investment there. There are also provisions, should there be a, a strong windfall, as we sometimes refer to it, in the sale of the project, for the village to share in that, ranging anywhere from 3% to 10%, depending on the total, total amount of the sale price. The other factor in there is that the village is likewise participating in the financial structure as a back, 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 backstop in, in the project. There is, through the bank financing, some safeguards, and the village participates in those long after any investors are called upon, or the developers are called upon, or even some of the developers personally are called upon. So the village is really engaged in a real private-public placement effort, which is a very strong model being used all across the country, and we're really celebrating that we're able to build this kind of relationship, and also not only get the project done, but provide an opportunity for the village to participate in any windfall profits at the time of a sale. John, anything, or Julian?
Julian, do you, do you have the most recent parking garage numbers?
I don't have the, the very latest figures, mine, I think, date back to July, mid-July, and it looks like at the point, are you looking at costs, John, is that the question?
Yeah, right, the, the cost of the parking garage.
So it looks like, as of mid-June, or mid-July, I apologize, we had spent about 6.8 out of the original plan of about 8 million in expenditure for the garage only.
And to fill that out a little further, there are certain elements of the garage that will yet come in and we will cover, those could not be completed until the residential tower is completed. This, this project is so integrated that by example, the fire suppression system in the garage is based on the fire suppression system in the building. the garage is based on the fire suppression system in the building. Likewise, the electrical in the garage, while there's some functional electricity, the real power grid that will support the elevator and other mechanical systems in the garage come off the main building. So, there are a few other expenses that will bring us pretty close to the, I believe it's just under 8 million, that was the original intended cost, I believe 7.8, 7.9. The garage is coming in as projected, no cost overruns, and none are permitted. Should there be any cost overruns, that is on the developer, not on the village. We are safeguarding.
I wondered if Mr., Mr. Hesseger and Mr. Murphy could comment on the, their anticipated timeline going forward.
Well, we're currently, this is John Murphy speaking. We're currently finalizing our loan negotiations with Wind Trust Bank. We're getting all our documentation lined up, and the equity raise has started. At this point, we have probably 75% of the equity committed, and expect in the weeks ahead to round off that and be, you know, probably moving forward in earnest with the project physically by the end of September, and that's really been our underlying objective all along, and, and, you know, as Michael mentioned, it's, it is a public-private partnership. The documentation tends to get a bit voluminous and takes the attorneys, unfortunately, a little longer to get through everything, but we can't be more thankful for the cooperation that's been extended by the village, and we're, we're very satisfied as to where we are currently, where the demand is coming from for, for multifamily, high-quality residential in, in suburban Chicago. And, you know, we intend to keep the village fully integrated with our process going forward as relates to schedule, milestone completion dates, and the like, so you'll be hearing a lot more about us as time goes on, and we want to be as transparent as possible throughout the entire process to ensure collective success.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. This item will, will be back for second reading and adoption at the board meeting on September I would like to just take a moment to thank John Murphy, Norm Hesseger, and Wind Trust Bank, one of our local, local banks. I can only tell you that the amount of time and energy that John, Julian, and Michael have put in, we owe them a lot of sleep. They have, and I'm not exaggerating when I say they have spent evenings working on not just this particular agreement, but on this project. There is no way that we're not for John, Norm, Wind Trust, and the village group working so hard that a project of this complexity could possibly get done, particularly in the midst of a pandemic. So, I, I want to just thank everybody for all the work they have done, and on September 21st, the ordinance will be back before us for second reading and final adoption.
That would conclude my report. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comments.
Thank you. Under new business, we have two items. This evening, we have with us the chairman of the village's Board of Fire and Police Commission, Will Evans, who would like to make a presentation. Will, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Thanks for having me. At our April 17th, 2020, meeting of the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, the commissioners voted to approve some amendments to the board's rules and regulations. As you know, the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners consists of five residents, of diverse residents, both age and, and gender and ethnicity. Our job is to recruit, to interview, and to hire all of the first responders that have served the village of Skokie. The rules and regulations have governed the procedures of the Skokie Board of Fire Police Commissioners for decades and have been amended from time to time. The amendment that we're proposing is to change the hiring procedures for lateral entry appointments of police officers. The, in this last year, we have had several Chicago police officers that have, that we have hired into the Skokie Police Department. The amendment provides a hiring procedures for lateral entry appointments of these police officers. The board realizes that when a candidate has a history of law enforcement appointment and training, he or she does not require the same level of training as an entry-level candidate. The board desires to capitalize on that experience that these lateral candidates have already acquired and allow them to fully join the Skokie Police Department. Still on a probationary period at first, but not require them to redo the entry-level training and testing, which they have completed. Most prominently among the amendments to the rules and regulations is the addition of Section 34000, the police lateral entry appointments. This outlines the procedure, including eligibility requirements and examination and selection of processes to be followed for lateral candidates. Many of the general requirements are the same as entry-level candidates. This parallel track for eligible candidates is meant to streamline the process by considering a candidate's law enforcement history and experience. The Board of Fire and Police Commissioners requests approval of these amendments and respectively request the Corporation Council to prepare the appropriate ordinance to effect these changes.
A motion on Chairman Evans' recommendation on police officer lateral entry appointment amendment to it, to the rules and regulations of the Board and Fire Police Commission is in order. Trustee Gray Keeler, seconded by trustee Sutker. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I'll call the roll.
Trustee.
Oh, trustee Roberts.
Well, I just wanted to ask, what has been the commission's experience? Do you think this is going to help you recruit more minority police officers to the village, and just in general, officers with more experience?
It will help us recruit, I think, officers with more experience. We've had, we've had some, I was, great interviews and great candidates. We have, I think, out of that, we have had some minority candidates. So, I hope it helps us. I think this year, as we discussed in the commission, it is a totally different place that we cannot even begin to tell how it's going to affect our ability to hire police officers, seeing what's going on in the media and in the world. You know, my gut is, I think it will help because we have a great police department, very supportive in the village, and the residents support the police department and not have the same amount of exposure that the Chicago Police Department does. As you might know, one of our commissioners is, is a retired commander at a police department, and, you know, we're, we're in a wait-and-see mode. It's been very, and Chief Starpelli is there to comment on that, it's been very difficult this last year or so trying to keep up with filling those roles. We need a lot of, I think, runway to do that. We've lost some of that, you know, this year with COVID, and as, just as the chair, you know, my concern is just taking the long view, is trying to make sure if we have retirements, that we're able to keep staffing the department, because we, we hire people, and we've also had turnover. Some of the people we've hired in the last year has, you know, it wasn't right for them, and they're going on to different jobs in the police department or have just left. So, it is a, it is my biggest concern in trying to do my job to serve the village, is, you know, is, is using anything we can to help us satisfy the needs of the police department. It is our priority. Fire doesn't have the same exposure, because most of the candidates are come, you know, you, you've got to have it in you to run into a burning building, and, you know, most of the candidates we get, we probably take 98% of them. It's not the same for police. We get a lot of candidates, and it's not, you know, just because you want to be a police officer, we have a high standard, a high bar, and spend all the time, it takes the weed out and evaluate what's the right fit for a Skokie. Our, you know, as a, I think, as a village, our brand, in my opinion, very much reflects what our police department is, and we are, will take all the time we can to make sure that when we get police officers, they fit that brand that is Skokie.
Trustee Ulrich, I think you had a question?
My question was along the lines of what, what Randy said about racial diversity. I've noticed that in the past few years, we've hired a lot of people from different backgrounds, and I'm really happy about that, and really proud of our Skokie Police Department, as the mayor always talks about how great you are, and so that you answered the question, I also want to, I bet people who have military backgrounds are interested in joining the police force, and hoping they get consideration for that as well.
They do get consideration. Yes.
Great, okay.
They get consideration.
And finally, Will, I'm a little upset that you're, and impressed that you're on this beautiful island behind you, maybe Dominican Republic, I don't know, the palm and the--
[laughing]
And you still walk in. So, yeah.
I was, I was waiting. Actually, that's just a virtual background. I'm still, I'm down the street. I'm just a half block away from Billy Tall.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, well, thanks.
There you go. Is that better?
I like the other one.
No, not. So, I'm glad to hear that you are considering military background, you know.
Yes, we do. That, they, they have an advantage, having military background.
And a lot of women have been hired lately, I've noticed as well. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Will. Enjoy the sunshine.
It's an honor. I wish.
Thank you, Will.
I'm getting the same sun you're getting.
Next item on the agenda, isn't it sunny? It's Plan Commission Case 2020-01M. With us this evening is chairman of the Plan Commission, Paul Luke. Paul?
Okay, am I, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor members of the board. Tonight's case is Case 2020-01M, a request by Gulf Medical LLC for the medical building at 4605 Gulf Road for amended, amendment to the site plan approval ordinance 076 Zs and Zebra 3509 through the modified review procedure to modify the site plan. The community development department received a request from Gulf Medical to amend its site plan ordinance through the modified review procedure. The site plan is for a 7,150-foot square foot building, which was approved in 2007. The owner's requesting approval for a 1,922-square-foot addition to the building. The petitioners have submitted a revised site plan and architectural elevations. Addition will result in a loss of nine parking spaces, but the site will remain fully compliant with parking regulations. The total number of spaces required with addition is 28 spaces, while the total provided on-site is 61. The Paris Commission reviewed the architectural elevations and approved, approved them after meeting on July 8th, 2020. The Corporation Council, Community Development Director, and myself reviewed the request. It is our opinion that the request cited, the site modifications are substantial compliance with the intent of the original site plan approval ordinance. It is respectfully recommended that the petitioner's request be approved to amend the site plan approval ordinance 076 Zs and Zebra 3509.
Thank you. A motion on site plan approval per ordinance 0706Z3509 is in order. Trustee Gray Keeler, seconded by trustee Klein. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye. The motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. The concluding item this evening is citizen comment. John?
Thank you. I received an email from a group of residents. It says, "Good evening. We are a group of Laurel Park neighbors who have been meeting regularly, regularly for the past few months in an effort to combat racism in our community. Many of us sent in a public comment for the August 3 Village Board meeting regarding Barack Obama's mayor's pledge that Mayor Van Dusen signed this summer. We really appreciate that the village publicized the pledge and the most recent new Skokie addition, and announced that the Public Safety Commission will take on administering the four steps of the pledge. We are so pleased to see that the commission is going to begin meeting regularly, begin on September 16th, to tackle this important work. In addition, we urge the commission to make an effort to diversify its membership in terms of gender and ethnicity. The second action listed in the pledge is to engage your communities by including a diverse range of input, experiences, and stories in your review. If the members of the commission do not represent the wide range of experiences in Skokie, we hope they will map out a process to seek those voices. Finally, we encourage the Public Safety Commission to lay out a blueprint for how they will do this crucial work, including a timeline for completion. We love living in Skokie, and we want to be sure that everyone living in Skokie feels as welcome and safe as we do." Carrie Swan, Christopher Swan, Laura Williams, London Somerville, Nicole Reynolds, Suzanne Strasburger, Joni McKinney, Katie McKinney, Beth Demms, Amy Aniochi-Eisenberg, Alice Pappas, Jamie Sandin, Megan Douglas, Randy Payne, Lisa Litberg, Carrie Ost, Carrie and Nathan Coleman, and Fernanda Perez. And so, just to kind of quickly provide an overview of the Public Safety Commission's status and the work, I'm pleased to report this evening that the Public Safety Commission's approach to reviewing the Skokie Police Department's use-of-force policies is expected to include a wide range of community voices. While the commission reflects a measure of the community's diversity, as its membership includes people of color, women, different generations, and different representations of faith, the project plan outline that will be discussed by the commission at its September 16th meeting includes engaging numerous community groups in the process over the course of the next seven to eight months, with a final report for the village board expected in late spring of 2021. Representatives from the Laurel Park Neighbors Group are among the community groups that will be invited to participate in the review process. And that's, those are all the comments that I've received prior to the meeting. Are there any additional comments received since the meeting commenced? There were no additional comments. Okay.
And I might point out that we do have two trustee liaisons to the Public Safety Commission, trustee Ulrich and trustee Sutker, who also will be participating in these, in this study. who also will be participating in these, in this study that will be done. With that, I believe trustee Bromberg gets your motion this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.